Good evening, Chair. Calls to order public hearing for Resolution 017-24, Enterprise Zone 1203, Technology Drive. Ms. Holt, if you'd like to come forward. Good evening, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, President Vincetti, Councilmembers.
Pull your microphone a little closer, Karen.
And if I may, for the purpose of the public hearing, I have a PowerPoint presentation that would introduce in succession.
Sure.
If I can just do that.
Sure.
All right. I come before you this evening to introduce our resolutions for three Enterprise Zone requests. Just to give a little context with the Enterprise Zone, it is a tool for our corridor. The map reflects, runs primarily along the Route 40 corridor and from Maryland Route 7 up through Haverty Grace to the county line at the Susquehanna. The Enterprise Zone provides real property and state income tax credits for businesses located in the Maryland Enterprise Zone in return for job creation and/or capital investment, capital improvement investment. In the Department of Economic Development, our role before a proposal goes to the ESTAT, the State Department of Assessment and Taxation, is just to verify that the property is within the Enterprise Zone. And then the role of the County Council is to offer approval based on the proposed legislation supporting their eligibility. And I want to emphasize eligibility. It actually is the state that will authorize those tax credits. So active is the Greater Aberdeen-Haverty Grace Enterprise Zone. It's comprised of a little over 9,700 acres and since 2006 has had $418 million in capital investment. We did previously have the Edgewood-Joppa Enterprise Zone, that sunset in June of '24. It had less investment in that area and about half of the amount of acreage. But all three properties today do occur within the Aberdeen-Haverty Grace Enterprise Zone. So our first property is 1203 Technology Drive. It is the Technology Drive Industrial Properties LLC. The capital investment on this project is $15.7 million and anticipated between 50 and 150 new jobs. That range is indicative of the fact it's built on speculation. It is under construction currently and looking at market assessment of a facility of its size, which is 255,000 square feet, we would anticipate that job creation. As I said, it's under construction. You can see the clearing in the photo below. We do anticipate completion of that by June of '25. And this is in Council District E, which is Councilmember Boyle Sodles. Prospecting has been encouraging for this property. It is approved as a distribution warehouse, but to date, we have had several inquiries with regard to a manufacturing nature, so we're encouraged by that activity. The next property is Old Bay Industrial LLC, and that's at 350 Old Bay Lane in Haverty Grace. This is a capital investment of $13 million and projected new jobs are 15 to 20. And this is Council District F, which is Councilmember Bennett's district. This is a, located within a municipality, so prior to coming before you tonight, it required a municipal ordinance from the City of Haverty Grace. That process has already been completed and approved. The facility is a hundred and, little over 157,000 square feet, and it's currently occupied already by Plastapack, who did an expansion in that location. And today, there are, of the 15 to 20 anticipated, there are 16 employees working at that site. And then the last property is CK Mechanical, Chevalou LLC, and are located at 1525 South Philadelphia Boulevard in Aberdeen. This is Scott and Chris Killian. Established in 2008, it's a commercial HVAC company, 3,200 square feet facility to expand for supplies and equipment. It does come with two new jobs, and it's again in Councilmember Bennett's District F. So all three of the approval requests met the eligibility, which is a minimum of $100,000 in investment and at least two jobs. Collectively, they represent $28.8 million in new capital investment, approximately 34 acres, and between 67 to 170 new jobs based on actual implementation. It is important to note that 50% of the tax credit that the county would incentivize through the legislation would be reimbursed by the state. And to give a context, the 10-year net revenue, so new taxes less the county's credit cost, Tech Drive would be 2.1 million, Old Bay Lane would be 1.1 million, and CK Mechanical would be approximately 50,000, collectively generating $3.3 million. The process going forward, following council approval, the legislation is forwarded to the Maryland Department of Commerce and to ESTAT to meet the December deadline, and that puts it in effect for spring assessments in 2025. So final figures will depend upon the onsite assessment of each property that gets conducted by ESTAT in the spring. And I'm before you requesting approval of the Enterprise Zone resolutions, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Holt. Council, if I may, I'd like to refer to both council members first, that these are in their districts. And Ms. Boyle Sodles?
Council President, you only opened the public hearings for Resolution 1724, so, which is the 1203. If you want to make a comment on that and then close that and then open the public hearings for 18 and 19.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Legend. So Ms. Boyle Sodles, if you want to comment on 1724.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Ms. Holt, for your presentation and our meeting in September. That was great. Just a quick question. There are the three properties on Technology Drive. I'm wondering if the other two properties will apply for this credit as well?
So currently, the Aberdeen-Haverty Grace Enterprise Zone is effective through 2026. So the first building is completed in '25, and that's why we're bringing them individually. We would have to see where the properties two and three come into play, but it is our anticipation that we would seek an extension for the Enterprise Zone property. We've had healthy activity in this area. It does focus on, you know, tech parks and industrial opportunities, so it is feasible that they would come forward as well.
Okay. Thank you. And is there any update on permitting as far as that third building? I believe it was number three.
Yeah, it's not to date. And again, another building would occur before that one, but there were some issues with resolving some road throughway in that area prior to that one being approved. So currently, it is not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Anyone else with questions on 01724? Mr. Pennman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Holt, thank you for being here. I really appreciate incentives like the Enterprise Zones to drive our economic development. So I'm happy to see these. And Councilwoman Boyle Sodles asked us some of the questions I had, particularly to this project. And then you mentioned something about the road. There were some questions about the road on Building 3. Is the administration supportive of providing that access to the roadway to allow Building 3 to move forward?
To my knowledge, there is ongoing discussion with it. I mean, it has not been, it has not been denied at this point, but there are some pieces that have to be worked through by the developer prior to bringing that forward for permit.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Janjordana?
Good evening, Ms. Holt. Thank you, Mrs. Holt. Thank you very much. Is there, if it goes manufacturing, is there an opportunity to expand that footprint? That building size?
I believe at this point, 255 was granted. I mean, that is the plan.
But I mean that, the area that that property sits on, if a manufacturer came in there, let's say it was like a battery manufacturer or something like that, and they needed 350 or 400,000, is that site big enough that they can expand to go to that?
The site itself is yes. The building as designed, and again, I mentioned a couple healthy prospect activities, it seems to fit what the interest is for manufacturing currently.
Okay. And I think that's the only question I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordana. Mr. Riley?
Yes, Karen, thanks for being here. Can you explain to me the sunset on Edgewood-Joppa Enterprise Zone? What does that mean?
So an Enterprise Zone is good for 10 years, and you have an opportunity to renew it. It's at the discretion of the jurisdiction. And basically, we weren't finding the type of job creation coming out of the Enterprise Zone in that area for that merit. We do have our Economic Development Advisory Board, our land use study, like assessing what other incentives could be concentrated on that area. This has successfully worked more in like industrial parks and things that are more common in the Aberdeen-Haverty Grace area, but we've only, to give you context, there's only been like seven in the Edgewood-Joppa Town area. So we've seen a lot more activity in the Aberdeen. We just did not pursue that because we think there are some more targeted incentives that could be more beneficial for the southern part of the county.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. If there are no other questions on 1724, we'll move to 1824. Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Good evening. I know when we meet, it's not really about whether we like or dislike, it's about whether it qualifies. But I do think it's worth noting that we said in our conversation that really Old Bay Lane is the model of what we think the Enterprise Zone should be used for and what it should look like. You know, this was space that was already being used but revitalized, not green space, open space, being torn up for the sake of putting something. So I just wanted to make note of that. I did hear in your conversation with Councilwoman Boyle Sodles that you plan on renewing the Aberdeen-Haverty Grace Enterprise Zone in two years?
It would be a consideration. We would look at activity and certainly, you know, this is, this is an incentive program. We have limited incentives here in Harford County, and there's often challenges of that. It's not our program. We're intermediaries to administer, but there is often challenges at the state legislative side to reevaluate this program. We've been successful to date, so given those conditions, it is something we would consider.
Maybe my office can reach out to you all in the county executive and to Mr. Samless and, because I just know particularly in my district, which was really touched heavily by both Enterprise Zones, the topic of Enterprise Zones has been contentious now for several years. So I would just love to sit down and hear the rationale and reasoning and math to know the pros and cons of either continuing or sunsetting the Aberdeen-Haverty Grace Enterprise Zone.
No, thank you. I would welcome that. And, you know, to your point with the Haverty Grace property, it's a great example. A lot of times, we use this as an attraction tool, but you know, here's a great example where we had an investor come in, build a facility, and it got to be a retention and expansion tool as well.
Thank you.
Counsel, anyone else with 1824 questions? Mr. Bennett, how about 1924?
On this property, again, it meets the requirements, but really, just barely. You know, they estimate two jobs, which is the bare minimum. They estimate investing $175,000, which is just barely above the $100,000 that they need. Is there any follow-up or follow-through to ensure that those numbers remain accurate when the work is done, you know, to make sure it's not $96,000 that gets invested into, you know, just so that the property remains qualified to be in the Enterprise Zone and receive the tax credit?
Yes, no, it's actually a good question. Since we met, I've been out to visit the site twice. I've walked the property with them. I've seen the facility, and I've checked on the employment opportunities there as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Counsel, any questions on 1924? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up for 1718 or 1924?
There's no one signed up, Mr. President.
All right, well, this will go ahead and conclude the public hearings for 017, 01724, 01824, and 01924, and they will all be considered a future meeting. Thank you, Ms. Holt.
Thank you, President Vincetti.
Next would be the public hearing for Bill 24-032, Tax Credit for Properties Near Refuge Disposal System. Mr. Samless?
Council President, members of the council, this is legislation that comes before you each and every year since through the early 1990s. The idea here is to provide some form of compensation to those individuals that live near the landfill, the Scarborough landfill. A landfill is something that, I might put this over here, that everyone in the county benefits, but the cost of the landfill is probably disproportionately borne by those individuals who live within close proximity of the landfill. So we've been able to provide a full tax credit, both the real, I'm sorry, both the general fund and the highways portion of the property tax bill, which is about 98 cents per $100 of assessed value, fully to those individuals that live in those areas. Now, they would still have your bay restoration fee or any state taxes or things like that, so they still do receive a tax bill, but as far as their county taxes go, those are, those are waived. They are required to submit an application each and every year, and that the council needs to approve the list of the, of the properties for the end of the calendar year, and this will be for this upcoming tax year that we do in July of next year. So right now, we have 35 homes that qualify. It has to be a primary residential home, so if you rent it, or it's a second home or something like that, it doesn't qualify. And because of that, sometimes we have, do have some fluctuation from year to year of one or two homes in either direction, but it's typically around 35, 35 homes. And the cost to the county is approximately $80,000 of foregoing revenue.
Thank you, Mr. Samless. Counsel, any questions to this on? Mr. Bennett?
Hello, Mr. Samless. Just out of curiosity, what about if there were to ever be an expansion of the number, if someone was to build new construction now? Would they still qualify?
So at the, yeah, so if, at the, likewise too, if the landfill itself were to expand, and then that would then envelop other stuff. So, yeah, so long as it's primary residential and is in that, in that area, they would then qualify. And in the past, we had, when we had the Waste of Energy Plan down in the Joppa Magnolia area, those individuals also received this tax. So likewise, you know, if we were ever to do anything, you know, outside of those boundaries, we would probably, of course, it would probably require legislation, but we would extend those benefits most likely.
Thank you. I was just curious if it applied to only people who were there before the landfill or?
Yeah, no, it's not grandfathered in. And again, certain homes seem to kind of go back and forth between primary residents and renters and things like that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There are no speakers, Mr. President.
All right, with no one signed up, this will conclude the public hearing for Bill 24-032, and it will also be looked at a future meeting. Thank you, Mr. Samless. And then Bill 24-033, Impact Fees, Mr. Bice?
Mr. Truitt is welcome.
Yep.
Now we have the PowerPoint.
I want to thank you for being here this evening. Carson, it's a pleasure to see you again in Harford County. Whenever you're ready.
Yes, so bringing forth legislation to update the impact fees. The impact fees were originally adopted approximately 20 years ago, and they have largely been unchanged in that period. They're actually, the original legislation did have them escalating, and they were, they did in fact escalate for a few years, but then they were restored back to their original amounts, kind of in the midst of the Great Recession, the great economic crisis of 2008, 2009, and subsequent housing, housing difficulties. Of course, in that time period, our school construction costs, which is how we use the impact fees, has increased almost 300%. So the revenue has largely stayed the same while the costs have, have increased. So understanding this, and of course, there was concerns within the community as well, county executive put together a committee to kind of look at this, which included members of his administration, the county council president, members of the school board, and the Harford County Public School staff, as well as citizen members and individuals representing the business community to go about, you know, looking at impact fees. One of the first things we did was to bring on board an outside consultant, the same outside consultant who has done the previous study for us and who has done a lot of the other studies for other Maryland jurisdictions, to look at it, to make sure that, you know, we weren't just picking a number randomly or just trying to assign it to where we thought, you know, costs should go or something like that. So to that end, Carson Bice from Tischler Bice did a comprehensive study, consistently, I think, kept the work group in communication, answered all of our questions, and then helped us kind of craft a recommendation that we're hoping to put forward. So I'll let him go and speak to the study itself, and then I'll have a couple of other comments. And then also, you should note that this will all be under, it's Dill and Ms. Truitt, who really collects the, the impact fees and administers it, so if there's any questions there as related to that form of the impact fees, he's available for questions as well.
Thank you, Robbie. Council President, members of the council, I can't believe it's been 20 years since I sat here before you. Seems like yesterday, and in that time, I've gotten married and have two kids, so crazy how time flies. So getting into the study, a little bit about us, because I know the, most of the council were not involved in the last study. We are based in Bethesda, Maryland, in Boise, Idaho. We're the national leader in impact fee analysis. We've done more impact fees than any firm in the country. We also specialize in fiscal and economic impact analysis and market studies and infrastructure financing strategies. And you can see here, we've got a wide variety of experience in the state of Maryland. A little bit about impact fees in general, they are one-time payments designed to offset new developments' impact on various infrastructure systems. In this case, we're talking about schools. We can't use the fees for operations, maintenance, infrastructure replacement, that sort of thing. It's not a tax, and I think that's important to understand, the difference, I go in front of a lot of bodies around the country where someone describes an impact fee as a tax on new development. And a tax is primarily revenue raising in nature. There's no relationship between the amount of tax paid versus the amount of services or the amount of infrastructure consumed. And a fee is typically designed to cover the cost of something. So when the county sets the fee for a site plan review, it's typically designed to cover the cost of their direct and indirect operating cost. With impact fees, we have to meet a broader set of standards. There's essentially a three-pronged legal test we have to meet. The first is we have to demonstrate, demonstrate through the study the nexus or need, meaning that the county is going to grow in student enrollment, that growth is going to necessitate the need for additional school infrastructure. We have to show benefit, and we show benefit in two ways. One is through the timing of the expenditure, meaning that we just don't collect school impact fees and let them sit in an account for 10 or 15 years without spending them. We have to spend them in a reasonable period of time so that the fee payer receives that benefit. The second part of benefit is geographic, and that sometimes leads us, and this is not the case in Harford County, to set up expenditure zones. And that typically is a situation where, you know, it's a tale of two counties, where one part of the county is very rural and is not receiving growth, but the other part is very suburban, and that's where you're building schools. So we have to guard against, you know, paying a fee in the south but building all the infrastructure in the north, or vice versa, in the east versus the west. And then finally, we have to make sure that the fees are proportionate, and that's why you'll see the fees are vary by size of house or type of house, because typically, single-family homes have more students, more people than multifamily units, and so the fees have to be commensurate with that demand. One of the other things we have to guard against in the, in the impact fee methodology is the idea of credits. So if I'm a fee payer, I'm going to pay the county an impact fee, but there's a chance that I may pay other revenues that go to the same infrastructure that I paid the fee for. So the bottom two credits here, the debt service credit and the dedicated revenues, those are baked into the methodology, so to speak. So for instance, if the county has a dedicated property tax that goes strictly to school capacity, we have to make sure that the impact fee methodology has a credit for that, or if there's another revenue source that's dedicated to that. If you have existing debt and are planning future debt, we have to guard against a double payment there. I'm going to pay you the impact fee, but you're also going to pay property tax that's going to retire that debt. The other type of credit is site-specific, and that's addressed in your ordinance, but the idea here is that if I'm a developer and I dedicate a piece of land for an elementary or middle school or a high school, that there's a development agreement that's worked out that makes me whole, so that I haven't paid the impact fee for the land component, and then I've double paid by also having paid impact fees. So in terms of the Harford County impact fee, there are two, two components here. That is the construction of additional brick and mortar classroom space, and then there's a component for future land purchases. We are using what's called a consumption-based approach or an incremental expansion approach that, for lack of a better term, is somewhat formulaic in terms of looking at different metrics. So how many, how many square feet is in an elementary school student station versus how many square feet is in a middle school student station? How many acres of land do we have per middle school student station compared to a high school student station, et cetera? And then what does it cost us to buy land? What does it cost us to construct additional bricks and mortar at the high school, middle school, and elementary school levels? And then also, we have to have the credits evaluated, so there's a credit for future payment on existing debt issuances, and then there's also a credit on future payments on anticipated debt issuances. So the first step is to determine the demand indicators, and in the case of school infrastructure, that is the number of public school age children by type of house. And we've got four different types of housing units here, single-family, townhomes, apartments, and mobile homes. And this is based on data compiled by the county's planning and zoning department. And this is sort of Maryland-specific. We've seen this in three jurisdictions in Maryland, and that is that the townhomes generate slightly more schoolchildren than a single-family unit. And again, that's very Maryland-specific. Normally, we see the single-family being higher. So the way to think about this is that a single-family house, in summary, if you had 100 single-family homes, you would expect to generate about 39 additional schoolchildren. Okay? That's the way to think about these pupil generation rates. Apartments generate the lowest, and then mobile homes are at about 30.32 or 32 children per 100 units. Second part of the analysis is we have to project student enrollment going forward. So what we did is we looked at housing unit projections based on the development pipeline and then applied those student generation rates that we discussed in the previous slide to these projections, and we are projecting over the next 10 years a minimum of 2.6, or excuse me, 2,643 students from additional housing units. Now, the hardest thing to project with school enrollment is the fact that you have an existing base that may or may not be recycling as they turn over and generate additional children for, of course, we cannot collect impact fees for because they are existing housing units. So in terms of current levels of service, we compare the number of students in each system, elementary, middle, and high school, to the overall square footage and to the overall acreage to determine what these, the student stations are in terms of square footage. So here, we are looking at 119 square feet for the elementary level, about 134 square feet for the middle school level, and about 153 square feet for the high school level. We also look at what it costs to acquire land. We don't like to speculate on what the county would, would spend in the future on land because that's unknown, so we tend to err on, on the side of conservative. And so we look at what a recent land purchase has been, and there's been one recent land purchase here in the last five years, and that's $8 million, 45 acres, which works out to about $177,000 per acre for future school sites. For construction costs, we are looking at most recent costs provided by district staff, and we have to account for the fact that the state of Maryland does participate to a certain degree in the construction of schools. And right now, the state is expected to participate at about 58%, and so the gross square footage cost is $668 per square foot, and the adjusted cost of the local share is $281 a square foot. the local share is $281 a square foot. Next, we get into debt service credits. I know this is a lot to look at here, but we have a credit of $5,745 on existing debt and $4,637 on future debt. And then this table here, as we work our way from the top to the bottom, it pulls in all those factors that we've talked about in the previous slides. So as we work our way from top to bottom, we get those level of service in terms of the amount of square footage per student station at each of the three school levels, the amount of, or then we look at the cost per square foot, and then we look at the land area per student station multiplied by the $177 per acre to get our cost per student there. And then we have a capital cost, or a gross capital cost here shown in gray. Those range from $39,614 for the elementary level, $43,666 at the middle school level, and $49,395 at the high school level. And from that, we deduct those two credits, the one for existing debt service and one for future debt service, to get our net capital cost per student, which range anywhere from $29,232 for elementary to a high of $39,013 at the high school level. We plug those numbers into those student generation rates we talked about in Slide 3, I believe it was, to get our impact fees at each school level. So we look at a single-family detached, and we work our way from left to right. The elementary school fee is $5,029 per unit, plus $3,005 for the middle school fee, plus $4,786 for the high school fee, for a total maximum supportable fee of $12,819. The current impact fee is $6,000, and the difference is $6,819. However, as part of the enabling legislation for Hartford County, it limits you to a maximum fee of $10,000. So the maximum supportable fee shows the highest fee the county could charge if you were not subject to that limitation. So that's the true cost of educating a child in Hartford County from a capital perspective, okay? Which is statutorily limited to $10,000. And so we recommend that the fees be reduced commensurately so that, because one of the things with impact fees is we can't discriminate against land uses, so we have to decrease them all across the board, so they're proportionate to the same relationship that we have in the maximum support. And then this shows your school impact fee comparison. As you're probably aware, there are several counties within the state of Maryland that have school impact fees. Some of them are also called impact taxes. I think Montgomery County calls it that. So in Montgomery County, it's $30,343 per unit. Frederick County is $13,478. Anterundale is $13,223. Hartford County, your maximum, which obviously you cannot adopt, is $12,819. The proposed is $10,000, and your current is $6,000. But you can see here, you sort of fall right in the middle between the highest and the lowest relative to other counties that have impact fees for schools in the state of Maryland. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the study.
Thanks, Carson. I appreciate you all through with that. Robbie, refresh my memory. How many meetings did we have?
We met beginning in January and pretty much met once a month. I want to say about six, six or seven meetings or so, with most of those in attendance, five in attendance.
And then, as you recall, when we got our first draft, I gave it to Ms. Ledgy. She pointed out the state-enabling legislation, which put us back to the drawing board for a little bit. But in that time, I met with municipal mayors in the county with the prospective or respective council representatives with Aberdeen, Havity Grace, and Bel Air, and then we've met with some other folks in the industry trying to put this out so they would have an understanding of what's going on. My colleagues have been doing their due diligence, and most of them have questions tonight, so I'm going to just lay back. And Mr. Truitt, I'm glad you're here this evening, and I'm going to start with Mr. Bennett.
Hello. Good evening. From your presentation, it's clear that even with this legislation, if it gets passed, there's a gap between the cost and the receipt. I think we run into that all the time with all sorts of fees. You know, I think about our 911 fee as an example, where we're still not quite covering what we're hoping to with that. There's a gap that exists. If you're outsider's perspective, do you think we should be outreach-ing and working with our delegation to have that cap raised? Or what would be your recommendation there for us beyond this legislation?
With all due respect, that's not for me to opine on. I can just show you what the true cost is.
Okay. Do you have any?
Well, I mean, we have had conversations with, you know, with the delegation, you know, as to this limitation. You know, I think when it was initially started, you know, $10,000 was a very high amount, because they were actually, you know, this was 20 years ago, that would have been well within the reasonable nature. And that's probably true of any time you set a dollar amount. The same is true when we have dollar amounts for spending thresholds. 1970-something, when we did the, you know, when we did the charter, it might have made a lot of sense. In 2024, it's not as much money. What we do know is that, you know, right now, we bring in, and it varies from year to year, but around $3 million a year in impact fees. Some years, it's been lower than $2 million, some years it's been around $4. When we look at the debt service that we had, and our total school debt service is around $35 million, but the debt service that is related to capacity projects that we have already done, so what we were talking about here would be like Red Pump Elementary, or when we added seats at Bel Air, or added seats in Edgewood, Youth Benefit Elementary, we have about $7 million of that $35 million is related. So right now, you know, we have a gap straightforward. As we look into the future, you know, we know that we have the new homestead Wakefield Elementary School. You know, that's going to be almost $90 million. Now, not all of that is new capacity, but a portion of it will be. We will have the new Hartford Academy, which will be the joint facility between the old John Archer for special needs students, and then also a community elementary school. That community elementary school will be a new school, and so a good portion, that school is going to cost $150 million. And so a good portion of that will be impact fee-eligible. And then we definitely know about what's happening in Aberdeen with all the new homes coming in around Ripken Stadium, and that we're going to need two things there. We're going to need land, which we don't know exactly, you know, where that's going to be and how much it's going to cost, but I'm sure it won't be cheap. And then we will have to build a new school as well. And then we already, and we know that we have other pockets of some difficulties as well. Even the new Havity Grace, you know, middle high school, which at the time had plenty of excess capacity, now has more or less filled that up. So there's going to be certainly opportunities out there, and we know that the costs are only going to, you know, are only going to increase. So we're going to have to build these schools, purchase this land, and so if we don't, what that does is that, in essence, it crowds out other spending. So spending that, you know, might otherwise either go towards, say, school general improvement, say like the Sea Milton Wright modernization or something like that, or just operating budgets for the schools, for public safety, for, you know, what have you. So it acts as kind of a crowding out. But when you have growth, you know, that's always, the school system, you know, if they were here, they would say that, you know, from a project standpoint, you know, capacity is always kind of their biggest issue. You have to address that, and then everything else kind of falls in behind it. So it does certainly crowd out other spending.
So I guess it sounds like you all are advocating with our delegation or having that conversation with the delegation about possibly adjusting our cap in the future?
I know that they have had conversations, would probably, you know, would say, you know, to the extent if members of the council or members of the public share a similar belief, you know, to also, you know, at least, you know, let them know. And I think any time we have limitations, it's all, you know, limitations on local government's ability to react to spending realities, it's always somewhat frustrating. And it's not that those caps probably weren't put in there out of good nature or, you know, out of ill intent, but it limits your flexibility, it limits our flexibility, and again, it does crowd out other spending, because this spending is going to take place.
Thank you, Mr. Sandless. If anybody up there could speak to Montgomery County, what makes them such an outlier in what their impact fee is set to with it being so high? Is there something different about its purpose or design that leads it to be $30,000?
I'm afraid I can't speak with any expertise on what Montgomery County does. We haven't worked for them. And as I said, I think they call it an impact tax. There's a little more leeway there. It's more like an excise tax versus a true impact fee. That's all I know about it. I can't speak to the vague reasons of their calculation.
Yeah, but we certainly do know that in Montgomery County, you know, they are going to have higher land costs, they are certainly going to have higher labor costs, and much more likely be using, say, prevailing wages for projects and the like, which are always going to drive up, you know, drive up those costs.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification, because I mean, it seems like Frederick County and Anterundale County, they're already in a relative alignment with what we expect the true cost to be. So see, Montgomery County is so much higher, which is interesting to me. I could probably reach out to someone out there and find out. And then lastly, just a general comment, but I think there may be amendments coming from others, and I just want to openly say, I personally won't support anything that will reduce the amount of revenue generated from our impact fees as set by this legislation, seeing presently that even with it, there will be a gap that needs to be filled. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Bullis-Sottles?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you. Have you ever seen these fees calculated differently, maybe by square footage or sales price, for example?
Point of clarification, you mean square footage of home?
Correct.
Yes, that certainly is an option.
And what about sales price of a home?
No, because then it's an actual tax versus a fee.
Okay.
And I should note that the, some of the initial recommendations that came from Carson were on the square footage basis, but the consensus in the committee from all the various stakeholders was that the type of housing was a preferable approach. And again, you know, both are valid, but we just thought that this was easier to understand.
Okay. Also, you had mentioned that the fees vary by the house type. In this bill, it mentions $10,000 for singles and $10,000 for towns. Can you speak to why they would be the same?
Well, again, that's because of the cap. I mean, if we didn't have the cap, then they would be, then they would have been at the, they would have been at the, at different, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, at the maximum supportable, you know, rates. And it was difficult to, theoretically, you could have made that because the student generation is higher for the town home than for the single-family home, but then we were also just kind of concerned from, you know, just from an equity perspective and some of that, that that would have been perceived as not fair. And so because of that, we decided to make them both at the $10,000 mark. And the same was true with the mobile home and the multifamily housing. Tried to, the multi, the mobile home could have been, could have been higher, but we didn't want to discriminate between workforce housing or more economical housing, really between rural and urban. And so because of that, we said, well, let's make it at the lower, the lower level.
Okay. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. President. Carson, Robbie, Rich, thank you for the presentation. It's just been a lot of information that I've been trying to absorb myself in, and I appreciate the discussion. I appreciate the discussion on the impact of development as it relates to schools and examining the level of service standard that we have here in the county. And I appreciate the fact that these fees would go to pay down the debt services for the schools, so we could free up potentially tax dollars, revenue for other projects. And maybe that goes into the school systems for educational purposes. But I think there is, I think we should have a discussion on the economic impact of increasing fees in our community on development. And Robbie, you kind of indicated previously, obviously, this bill got passed in 2005 with Bill 0521, and it had escalators to where it was increased to $8,269. And then you can see from the housing crisis and the Great Recession in 2008, it had a negative impact, and they reversed some of those escalators to where the fees are now. So it does have an impact, and I think it's worth having a conversation. Not that I'm necessarily opposed to addressing it, but I think it's worth having a conversation about, because there's this notion out there that, you know, developers have to pay their fair share, and we know that's just not how it works. You know, a barrel of oil goes up $10, and the price of the pump goes up. So it's going to have an impact on inflation, it's going to have a negative impact on our local economy, and we have to measure that, right, to decide what's in the best interest of the county. It's interesting, though, on the inflation side of things, you know, my calculations over 10 years, the population has grown roughly around $16,000, 16,000 people, excuse me, with about 568 children added to the school system. So I don't think it's necessarily a capacity issue. I think the school cost is an inflation issue, and this could, you know, increase the inflation, influence the inflation, because reality of it is, this bill, if passed as is, would increase the cost of a home $4,000, increase the cost of townhomes $5,800, as well as apartments, increase the cost of apartments. So that's going to have an impact on our community. And if anybody was at the recent economic development meeting at the Aberdeen High School, one of the main components that they mentioned was the fact that we have an aging population in Hartford County, and we need to find ways to attract the younger generation to come and live and work and raise a family in Hartford County. But some of the problem to that is the cost of living, and this is only going to go into the issues there with the cost of living. So Carson, my first question is to you, and I appreciate all the data that you presented in your study, but in this particular study, or any particular study that you had with any other agency or any other county, has there ever been an evaluation on the economic impact of increasing impact fees?
Yes, sir, quite a bit. I'm not sure where you want me to go with this, but I can tell you that I would hazard a guess, I'd bet dollars to donuts during the Great Recession, when you reduced the fees, didn't have any commensurate impact on the number of permits in terms of increases because we had a larger structural economic issue at play. I can tell you that if you raise the impact fee by $4,000 in this instance, depending on the interest rate environment we find ourselves in, it's a de minimis impact on a 30-year mortgage, if you assume that it's rolled into the price of a home, not to discount the fact that it is a $4,000 increase. All I can tell you is, is I've been doing this 34 years. I'd say that 60% of the impact fee jobs that we have right now are multiple repeat clients that keep going to the well, and the impact fees tend to increase, they don't decrease. And if they had an adverse impact on their economic situation, I'm not so sure they'd keep going to the well.
No, that's a fair point, because things cost more, inflation costs. But we have seen in the past, we did, you know, this county, go backwards. My other question is, you know, you know, I know, I understand, have a brief understanding of kind of what these fees are going to be used for, and debt services is, you know, predominantly what it's being used for. But as it relates to the APFO, and, you know, we have several schools in our county that are at capacity with over 110%. So I don't believe that it should be an indefinite moratorium on those districts. So these impact fees that we are collecting, are we using them, or should we be using them, to reduce the capacity issues on those particular schools so we do not have a moratorium in those districts?
I'm afraid I'm not an APFO expert, so I really don't feel qualified to comment on that policy level. And do you have Tyson?
Yeah, and we, you know, and that is one of the things, and obviously, you all know this, but for those who don't, one of the things that came out of our work with Carson and his firm was the need to also look at the adequate public facilities. And so to that end, we, the county government, along with the council's lead, brought in an outside consultant, Whiten Smith, to... brought in an outside consultant, Whiten Smith, to take a look at our adequate public facilities and make sure that they are appropriate. But I think if you go back, though, to the original idea, though, which is that these impact fees can only be used for capacity projects. They can't be used for new roofs or modernizations, they can't be used for operating, so they have to be used for capacity-related projects. And the school system, obviously, is going to be the one, though, that determines, you know, kind of the priority of their capacity, of their capacity needs. Unfortunately, there's just not enough money to go around when it's, you know, when it's $600, $700, $800 a square foot. There's not a whole lot you can do with $3 million. The school system, of course, ultimately controls rebalancing, redistricting, you know, whatever the term is that you wish to use. And one of the benefits with the impact fee is that we can then deploy it, you know, wherever, because the school system can always shift enrollment boundaries accordingly. But it is a challenge a lot of times, particularly at the elementary level, where sometimes you can have a blip in an area, and then the next year goes away just because of, you know, family choices and the like. So you can't just necessarily always be adding extra capacity. But when we look at the capacity stuff that's coming up the horizon, you know, particularly in Aberdeen, you know, that is, we know where that's coming from. You know, we know that it's thousands of new homes, and we know that it's going to need a new elementary school. And so there's not a whole lot of, I don't think there's a whole lot of massaging around that, that I don't even think, though, if the school system can do without putting elementary children on the bus and moving them to some of the schools that are under capacity in the northern Hartford areas or in other parts of the county.
So just to follow up on your question, because there was a lot, you covered a lot there. And what I thought I heard was that the impact fees that you're leaving up to the schools to decide where those funds go to alleviate capacity. And then, so my question is, you know, and I get that, you know, they know their needs, but at the same time, in a certain district, like Red Pump, I think there it's over 110%. You know, we are stopping economic growth in those districts based off the capacity issues in the APFO. So wouldn't it be a point of emphasis on the school systems to say, I know you have needs, but we should address these because we're having an economic impact on these areas? And I know there's other considerations, like, can we expand those schools? Is the property conducive to do it? But those are discussions that I would hope that we're having with the school systems to have a discussion to alleviate this, you know, never-ending moratorium in certain areas to expand capacity in the schools.
Yeah, and I don't believe that the schools are necessarily looking to have overcrowded schools in areas in order to do that. I think that they're trying to balance priorities. Now, when I say that, so when the school system determines their capital budgets, we would look at it and would say, okay, this project that we're going to build is capacity-related, and then we would prorate it, because maybe they only added 10% new seats. So we would only, we would take 10% of that cost, and then when we sell the bonds for that project that they're building, we would say, okay, 10% of those bonds, we're moving over, and we're going to use the impact fees to pay for those, that debt service. The other 90%, we're going to use out of other school construction funds. But I think we do work with the schools as far as trying to, as far as trying to balance all of this. But it is a challenge, again, because the costs are so high now for school construction.
So, all right, we'll move on to another point. You know, we are, we do have a maturing county, right? Our development envelope is only so big, you know. So, and, you know, that may be the reason why the permits are down. My data says it's down 19.6%. So, and we can argue whether that's county policies, that's, you know, maturing development, or what. But, you know, these are things that we need to consider going forward, that no matter what, these impact fees collected could be reduced based off of, you know, the need in our community or the availability for these permits. And then I, so that leads me to an APFO meeting that we were at, I guess just last week, maybe, where it was discussed where it could potentially have a decrease in housing permits. And then, so you would have consideration of houses expanding on their, you know, existing footprint. So has there ever been any thought to that? Is there discussion on that, Mr. Truitt? I know that's kind of in your realm of kind of what the future is of these permits and what it looks like.
Thank you, Councilman Pennman. Yes, so we have a lot of factors at play here. You know, not only in this committee, but also in the APFO committee. You know, I've been, I've provided some testimony and provided some feedback that, you know, our requirements for building codes, especially in the energy code, especially in new construction, are becoming very, very stringent, and they're only going to get worse. As we move forward, you know, the numbers right now, if you go back to FY '23, additions and alterations basically accounted for about 35% to 40% of the residential permits that we issued. Only 9% were from new residential structures. FY '24 and currently in FY '25, that new permit total, that new construction total numbers are a little bit inflated because we had the building code come into play in May, and we saw a huge spike in dwelling unit permits prior to the adoption of the building code. That has continued on for a couple of months. We're now in the fifth month of the quarter. We just got the number of the fiscal year, and we just got those numbers back. We finally starting to see that decrease in single-family dwellings. And they're starting to definitely show a decrease in the amount of permits that we are getting from a county base. So, you know, as you move forward, there is an argument potentially to be made that existing structures, by putting additions and alterations, do become more valuable because of all the different economics that are involved in this and the cost of new construction, which potentially could have an impact on schools and school population.
Right, and if we're having this conversation about the impact, and there's a whole another element that we're not even considering, it's worth a conversation. And that kind of leads me to the alternative measures. And Councilman Bullsodles mentioned this as well, about potentially changing the algorithm to, you know, per square foot. I mean, if we're talking about a lot of the data, Carson, that you put into the study, it's all per square foot, per student, right? The cost of construction is per square, per student. So if we're trying to capture the true impact of children coming out from homes in our county, right? And we want to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, younger generations are going to move in and don't have the finance or to afford a bigger house, they're going to go into a smaller house. And maybe that algorithm with that per square foot, now, I don't know what that number looks like. If you look across the state, there's multiple counties that have per square foot, right? And some have them up to $10, and some have them down to $1, right? So we'd have to look at that and kind of see what that looks like. But perhaps that captures the essence of what the true impact is, rather than just applying, you know, a number to a unit, being in a house, town home, apartment. So I think that that could possibly be a discussion point. And my final point, and then I'll close, Mr. President. Another alternative is phasing this in. This is, this is a big increase, right? You know, you're looking at, I know that it was mentioned in the data, 300% increase since the legislation was introduced with the construction cost to build a school. And there's no doubt about that, right? But we're asking for 140% roughly of an increase on impact fee on the community. So I just, you know, I caution my colleagues, I'm not saying that, you know, this isn't something that we need to adjust, so that's not what I'm saying. I appreciate the conversation, but I caution my colleagues in the communities to look at the impact and find, you know, possibly alternatives to where we can ease this in, and we don't have the significant impact all in one legislation piece. So with that, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Riley?
Yes, just a couple of things. First off, I don't see a list here of all the committee members. There's a way we can get that, Rob? Okay, especially the business community, I'd appreciate that. And then the list of all the, you got all these counties out here. Can you give us a list of how they all do it? I know you gave us a small portion, but can you do them all so we might be able to see other ways that counties do it besides what you wanted to show us?
Point of clarification, Councilman Riley. We have done several of these. Montgomery County, I can't, we can't seem to put our hands on a study that, so I'm not sure I can describe.
You can't expand any more than less.
Right, and this is what we know of in Maryland in terms of school impact fees. Now, I can show you how other people do it across the country. But anyway, we've done Anarundel, we've done Frederick, we've done Talbot, we've done Carroll.
So within the state of Maryland, you have a lot of counties that aren't experiencing growth. And so with a county that's not experiencing growth, you know, in Allegheny County, a Somerset County, wouldn't have the same pressures. I do know that Prince George's County kind of did theirs internally. Some people will try to do those internally. One of the reasons, I think, we, both in 2004 and in 2024, you know, again, wanted to make sure that this was not just subject to some of our own, of our own internal biases or too simplistic, and that's, of course, why we brought in outside assistance.
That's it, thanks, Mr. President. Thanks, Mr. Riley. Mr. Janzardana?
Boy, I don't know what's left over here. So, thank you, gentlemen. Couple of questions. One of the big questions, one of the big things I have is that you talked about projected students. Is there any way that you figured into your projected students, the number of people that are coming in here from other countries, maybe not into this area, but and how that affects our student population and what that does to, nothing, correct?
That is correct, Councilman. So, yeah, so we just have, I mean, the data available to us, whether the county planning department gives it to us, or we do student surveys, or we use census data, it's not telling us, you know, where they're coming from, what their economic situation is, et cetera. It's just a raw number of student, you know, school-aged children, which we then have to then factor in. You know, there's certain percentages that are going to private schools or maybe being homeschooled, et cetera. So we don't have that data at our fingertips. Related to that, to a point, to a point that Councilman Pennman made, is that, you know, right now, that, you know, you've got an older, you've got a population that's aging in place, right? Well, I've seen that turn on a dime, right? And that's why you should be updating your impact fees every five years instead of every 20 years, to factor in these trends that happen, because there have been huge demographic shifts in the 20 years that, since you last did your fee study. And so, and as I said, we had several clients in Florida around 2012 to 2014 that were seeing flat to declining enrollment growth that are now growing like gangbusters. And it's a temporary situation, right? And that's why these impact fees aren't a static land use regulation that you keep in place for 20 years. You've got to keep on top of it to, one, keep up with the cost of inflation, because I would argue that your $6,000 fee in real dollars is more than $10,000 compared to what it was 20 years ago, right?
So, yeah, when you look at it, 20 years, and you're going to go up from 6,000 to 10,000, that's a small percentage increase each year that we didn't take, even though at one point we were higher, and they did reduce it due to the recession in 2009, which, as you mentioned, had other implications on that. Do we know, and I know, Mr. Truitt, you talked about permits. Do you have a number, though, of permits for single-family homes, for town homes, that may be last year and the year before? And if you don't have it there, that's fine, I just would like to get it. I wasn't benefit to be on the meetings or any of these meetings that were had. So some of this information I don't get, and I just want to research back on that, too.
We can, I sent over some data this afternoon, but just to your point, FY '24, single-family homes for the county was about 152, town homes was about 105 that we have numbers on. Now, that does not reflect the numbers from the municipalities. The way we can extract, the only way we can extract the number from the municipality right now through our system is by identifying the impact fee that was paid. So we really can't.
So of that 152 and 105, it does not include the municipalities?
No, it does not.
But if I, like, take the amount of impact fees that we got dollar-wise and then just divide by 6,000, last year, you know, I came up with like 183 for single-family home. Town homes, 305, because I think we probably had a lot of the originally, originally homes there. So those types of, I kind of look back, 183, 150, something.
What about apartments? Can you tell me that? Because I know there's been a lot of apartments built.
So apartments, you know, correct, is one fee, like, if you build with 10 apartments, it sort of just comes in, I think it might come in as one fee, but I don't know, when we divide by the number.
One fee for the entire apartment if it has 350 or 500 units?
I mean, housing in the system, but then, like, if I divide by the 1,200, the condo apartment fee, I'm sorry, not getting picked up here. Like, I came, I came up with 264 individual units for last year for condo apartments, but then you go back to 2022, it looks like it was 663.
But it also doesn't include the municipalities?
No, 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 this one would, because municipalities, now, and this is just an average, and there can always be some weird variations, but just taking the dollar amounts collected and divided by the number of, you know, dividing by what the fee is. But yes, municipalities do pay this fee, just, that is one thing, just to make very.
So how do we get the number for apartments, the number of apartments that were built, whether it's 2023 or 2024, how many units? How do we get that number in total, not just, you know, one fee for each?
I mean, again, by doing it the division way, is, I'm coming up with 264 in fiscal year 2024.
But that doesn't, still doesn't tell me the number of units per apartment?
No, no, that should be units, because when you, it's $1,200 per unit. So if you build a 10-unit apartment, it's $1,200 times 10, correct? Yes.
So you're telling me, out of all of 2023 or 2024, only 264 apartment units were built in the entire county?
Yeah, you know, in other years, we have, we have higher numbers, or, you know, there's certainly some.
What's the other years that they'd be higher? That just absolutely makes.
663, you know, or some of the, some of the higher years.
Councilman Janzardana, we have seen some of the apartment projects that were put on hold were actually permitted in prior years, as Mr. Sanlis is indicating. So it doesn't surprise me that the FY '24 numbers are a little bit low because those permit numbers would, or when we collected the impact fee, would have been in prior fiscal years, so.
And that's probably what I need, then.
Yeah, so you need to go back.
It just doesn't make sense.
You need to go back two or three years, I think.
You know, that the apartment complex up in Hickory was, you know, a couple hundred units, and there's been some other units that are 300 or whatever. That's why I'm saying 200 just doesn't make any sense.
The Jack Lane apartments, I believe, were actually permitted, probably their applications were probably in 2021, potentially, in that area. And I'm just guessing, because I know they were on hold for a long time.
Yeah, '21, we had 47, again, paid, and typically, you're being paid at the time they apply for their building permit, not necessarily when it opens or before, so.
Yeah, that's fine, we'll do that. Get some more information later. Thank you.
Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was on the council in 2004 when we put the impact fees in the first go-around, and we had a lot of discussion on that. And I believe we, this discussion like this, if we had the numbers today that we had then, this discussion would go to 2:00 in the morning. Let me give you some numbers back then when we were dealing with the impact fee, okay? The adequate public facilities, which is now 110, we took it to 15, and it sunsetted to 110. That's how it got to 110. At the time, 2004, it was 120%, okay? That was the capacity. Not only was it 120%, but at the same time, there were 40,000 students in the system, and now there's 38,000. Talk about having two schools that are capacity at only 110. We had about 15 schools that were 120 or higher. We had schools that, at that time, that went to 125, 130% over capacity. And that's why we developed the impact fee, and I think, again, I think we even had a sunset clause on the impact fee, but eventually the sunset clause came off. We took it off, so. And with the impact fee helped us and a number of other things, because we needed to build a lot of schools. And we built a bunch of them, you know, five, six, seven schools, it came no matter how many we built after that, to, which helped to lower the APFO. helped to lower the APFO, because now we had more schools and we built them bigger. Patterson Mill, new, that was a brand-new school, middle high school. Blair High School, brand-new one, tore that down. Tore down Edgewood High School, built a new one. Large Aberdeen High School. So, it, it, and then I look at these numbers, you know, 183, 400, we were building 2,000 homes a year at that time, and that's what made this impact fee and everything be so important at the time. So, I support this, because it's, it's good for the schools and it's good for a fee to, to try to make sure we never get to what we had in 2004, 2005, with such a, schools such overcrowding and such big numbers with this, with the APFO at 120%, and make sure we never get to that again. We've had, I've had about, about 10 emails on the subject that, which are here. Every one of them supported. I don't have a single email that's opposed to it, including the Friends of Hartford. They support it also, so I'm looking forward to voting for the subject.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Bennett?
Hello again, good evening. If you could just help clarify, because of some comments I heard from Councilman Pennman. I was 13 in 2008. Was the housing crisis caused by the $8,000 impact fee that existed in Hartford County at the time?
Again, I think it was largely external forces, probably the, the subprime mortgage and the housing, and the housing boom, which is all, you know, again, there, there is that. And at the same time, I do, we, we do understand that it is a cost, that someone, someone is going to bear that cost. And again, whether it is the, you know, whether it's, if the builder is able to pass it on to the individual, which may or may not happen, because businesses cannot always pass along additional costs to, to builders. Ask anybody that has a small business and, and has their electricity go up, or what have you, you, you can't always just pass it on. However, it, it is going to be paid by somebody, and it is going to be used for these particular items, and that is school capacity projects. And it's very similar to how we'd work it with, with, with Water and Sewer. When you enter, when you build into, and you hook up to the Water and Sewer, you're kind of buying into that system. That system was, was made to, to operate, and you're kind of buying into it. And, and in order for the system to work, it needs to add capacity, and that, somebody has to pay for that capacity.
I, yeah, I appreciate that clarification, because I had not heard that before. So, I'm glad you made sure, it was understood that the housing crisis was not caused by the Hartford County impact fee. And I did do the math, because it was brought up about the cost over a 30-year mortgage, a $4,000 increase is $11 a month on your mortgage to cover the cost of the impact fee, assuming that cost is passed along to the buyer. And I just want to say as a general comment, because it seems like anytime we talk about a fee adjustment, some members of our council get very worked up. You know, I remember when we brought up 25 cent increase for 911 service fees to help cover the cost of our 911 dispatchers, and some people acted like that was going to ruin everyone's budget to have to pay an extra 25 cents a month to cover the costs of those services. And here, $11 a month over the course of a 30-year mortgage, and again, we're acting like it's going to cause the great economic crash. And I just think, as a general rule, we can't claim to be supportive of these services and these industries that our community relies on if we're unwilling to fund them, if we're not willing to make funding sources for them. And I think all of us on the council recognize the important need that this funding source covers, and it should be simple to support it as-is, to fund it at the maximum level that we currently are able to.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Pennman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify, when 2009, when this bill was reversed, as far as the escalators, I never, I never discussed that it was the cause of it. It was the stimulus package. And I've done research to where I went and had conversations with council members then, and that was the purpose of it, and I think you alluded to it in your comments. It was an effort as a stimulant package to reduce the cost of housing in our county. And then I would just, just also want to just convey a, a quick point. Fees are taxes, right? There's an argument that they're not, they are. So, if you increase the trash fee, and you increase the phone fee, and you increase the EMS fee, and then you increase the impact fee, it has a cost to our community. Our community, that every single dollar they have is important. And if they're going out the door because of fees and the, you know, to conceal raising taxes, we need to have a conversation, and we need to discuss it as a community. So, this notion where 25 cents, and it doesn't matter if your trash tax goes up by 46%, it's okay, it's not okay. Inflation is up, that's what this would further, you know, cause an issue with, and, and this is all a conversation. That's what it's here for, that's why we're here, it's public hearing, so, thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Pennman. And if no one else has a question, I would like to just ask one question. Rich, to you. Habitat for humanity, do they pay impact fees?
Yes, we just had this discussion yesterday. The impact fees.
I just got an email, that's why I'm asking.
There is a provision in the code for housing, nonprofit, yeah. So, I think it's a contribution by the county executive's office that actually covers that fee.
So, in essence, the general, the general fund or general taxpayers, in this case, cover that fee on their behalf, but the, but the fund itself is not, is not shorted because of, I think, the, in, in order to keep the validity of the whole idea of the impact fees, is that, you know, everybody kind of has to pay. So, if they're not, you don't just give them a waiver, you, you, you pay it on their behalf.
Got it, thank you. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Mr. President, we have six this evening.
I would call your first speaker, and I would just remind you that you have three minutes.
First speaker is Brianna Coleman, followed by Diana Sadowski.
Good evening, ma'am, name and address, please. Is that mic on?
Hello?
Hello.
Good evening, I'm Brianna Coleman, 2347 Ingle Road in Foston. Good evening, council members. I truly hope this is the last time you'll hear me speak about impact fees. I support this bill as-is. Not many realize the effort that goes into making changes like this, and I'm proud of the progress we've made together. I'd like to thank Council President Vincetti and his 10 out of 10 sidekick, Sam, the county executive, and the rest of the members of the impact fee work group for their time and dedication to making this positive change for Hartford County. I'd also like to thank the council attorney, Megan, for highlighting an issue before this bill was introduced, that because of limitations in our charter, Hartford County still will not fully recover the cost students impose on our schools for certain dwelling types. There's more work to be done. Tonight, Carson Byes presented data clearly showing support for these increases. Why is this a good bill? Well, first, it's been 20 years since our fees have been updated, while school construction costs have risen 281%. And who's paid the difference? Us, the citizens of Hartford County. In 2023, the county collected a little, a little over $1.5 million in revenue from impact fees, leaving $7 million to be covered by the taxpayers. Growth should pay for growth, yet developers continue to profit without paying their fair share. The community supports this bill. A community argument is that developers will pass these costs on to renters. While they may be true, they already charge market rates for rents regardless of the cost. In a recent conversation I had with Councilman Pennman, he suggested this bill might make homeownership less affordable for young people, but the actual impact of this bill would amount to about $10 extra a month on a mortgage. That's not exactly out of reach. In the same conversation, Mr. Pennman said he was looking into where the money goes and seemed to be surprised to learn that the funds go towards school debt. By law, these fees fund school site acquisition, construction, renovation, debt reduction, or capital expenses. And yes, there's a lot of debt, because for decades, we haven't collected enough to cover the impact development is having on our schools. This modest increase ensures we're closer, and like Councilman Bennett once said, it's unfortunate we don't have a time machine. This bill is the solution, and there's a real opportunity for progress here. Any amendments or delays to the proposed fees only benefit developers, not the taxpayers or students of Hartford County. And I think Mr. Pennman showed where his loyalties lie tonight. This is a good bill, and I trust you'll make the right choice. Thank you, as always, for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am, name and address, please.
Good evening, Diana Sadowski, 1113 Stromco Drive, Foston, Maryland. Good evening, Council President and council members. First, I'd like to express condolences to the Guthrie family on their recent loss, and I pray God sends his angels to comfort you and give you peace. Now, I stand before you with regard to Bill 24033, impact fees. According to the fiscal statement on the bill, its approval would increase impact fee revenue by 3.6 million annually. That's quite a bit of construction monies for our schools, and as this is the first attempt to increase these fees in over 20 years, so talk about leaving money on the table. We've done that. As I've said in the past, Hartford County has been on sale for too long, and it's been proven. While this bill is a move in the right direction, I have concerns with it, especially about exemptions. It's this Grammy's opinion that a closer look is needed regarding the length of time with regard to applications for building permits and the actual build. Waiting possibly up to 10 years before any fees are collected just seems wrong to me when we have an immediate need now. And I think we need to shorten that time for that investment in Hartford County. I'm just going to throw this out there just for filing in the back of our heads. At last night's Board of Education meeting, the state superintendent indicated that enrollment was actually down. I'm asking that we just store that tidbit for the future. If that is the case, then these impact revenues will look even better to us. In closing, I'd like to say kudos and brava and bravo to all involved in this bill process. As I said, it's a start, it's not perfect, I think things need to be looked at, and especially without the collective effort, it would still be business as usual, and I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jeff Beck, followed by Stephanie Flash.
Good evening, sir, name and address, please.
Good evening, sir, Jeffrey Beck, 102 Shell Road, Joppetown, Maryland. This is a really nice podium. According to Maryland Declaration of Rights, Article 6, all persons invested with the legislature or executive powers of government are the trustees of the public, and as such accountable for their conduct, our free government exists.
Sir, let me stop you right there. I think you're getting ready to speak to something that's in litigation?
No, sir, nope, 100% impact fees.
Okay, very good, go ahead.
I start, start every time with that.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just, just a reminder.
Okay.
Free government exists for the sole purpose of preserving and protecting the freedoms and liberties of the citizens. Every bill drafted, every amendment offered, and every press release issued ought to be preceded by the question of how is this action going to preserve the liberties of my constituents? Regarding Bill 24-033 for the impact fees, I am in favor of it. I understand the state limitations, I think it doesn't go quite far enough to cover the, cover the gaps. It has been, as stated previously, nearly 20 years without any adjustment. In 2023 alone, there was approximately a $4 million gap between impact fee revenue and school capacity project expenses. Based on my math, the originally reserved community alone, under the proposed fees versus the current fees, would have generated an additional nearly $2 million in impact fees, and that's just one community. There are obviously some negative consequences to keeping impact fees low, less revenue to support the necessary school infrastructure has been repeatedly stated this evening already. I think keeping the impact fees low sends a message that Hartford County is for sale, kind of a discount store for developers. The existing residents are then left to pick up the tab, as we have been doing for the last 19 years for, for the differences. Our neighboring county, Baltimore County, just revised their impact fees this summer to the point that they are collecting $6 per square foot. Quick math on that, a average 2,400-square-foot single-family home is going to collect $15,000 per home versus our 10, we're still kind of a discount store. That being said, I do strongly encourage all of you to vote in favor of this bill as it exists. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck, and my apologies.
No worries.
Good evening, ma'am, name and address?
Good evening, Stephanie Flash, and I'm speaking on behalf of Friends of Hartford. Friends of Hartford supports increasing impact fees to fund new school construction, as this revenue is, as we've been mentioning, very essential to the growing educational needs that we see in Hartford County. The approved county operating budget in 2025 anticipated the 2.1 million in revenue from impact fees, and the proposed increase, as we have been talking about, could bring in 1.3 additional. These funds represent a fair and necessary solution to balance our growth with critical infrastructure that we've all already discussed about our schools. New housing developments being, bring more families and students, as we know, increasing the demands for our classrooms and schools. Currently, Hartford County's impact fees are significantly lower, as stated in the research discovered today, highlighting these needs for adjustment to ensure that the developers do contribute appropriately to the costs associated with new school constructions. In 2009, the county council did suspend the impact fees supporting the housing market during an economic downturn, but since then, the construction costs have almost doubled, but the impact fees have remained unchanged, placing the cost of the new school construction on taxpayers. So, increasing these fees is not a barrier to affordable housing, rather it ensures that developers contribute to the infrastructure needs of our expanding communities. And as our county continues to attract new residents due to our quality of life, and it will continue to grow, adjusting the impact fees, similar to how Frederick Counties and our other surroundings, for inflation ensures that the developers do fit, do pay their fair share in supporting the essential infrastructure for our growth, growing population. So, raising the impact fees would align Hartford County with funding practices in other Maryland counties, creating a reliable funding source for our school construction. This adjustment is a fair way to support growth without overburdening the taxpayers or our schools. Friends of Hartford asks that you support the bill without amendment, without amendments that would literally limit the critical funding that our schools need, and to help maintain Hartford County as a desirable place to live and learn.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lauren Heiser, followed by Joe Sne.
Good evening, ma'am, name and address, please.
Hi, Lauren Heiser, 2087 Stewart Drive in Foston. Nice to see everybody again, it's been a little while. I had a lot of things I planned to say, but so much was covered, I really appreciate it. September of 2023, I came and addressed the council out of concern due to the number and size of all the large-scale residential developments that have been approved or proposed in our county, and I asked for change relating to school forecasting, APFOs, and impact fees. As we've all discussed tonight, the impact fees are at 2004 rates despite a 281% increase to construction costs. I would have kept it really simple and just said, hey, let's match it, let's raise it. But the county did their due diligence. I mean, the presentation tonight, how many aspects they looked at to really calculate what the right amount is. We don't need to consider square footage calculations. They did that, that's what we paid them to do. Delaying the passing of this bill is costing our county money. One of the previous speakers mentioned $2 million difference if it had been for the originally community. I did similar calculations for things like the proposed development off Plumtree, Belair Village, that, that would be a 2.2 million dollar difference. Time is of the essence. There are lots of proposed communities at play right now. The longer this takes, the more of a deficit we fall into. We've all agreed that even with this change, every home that contains children, I mean, puts us at a deficit. One of the things that Councilman Pennman mentioned, that, you know, people sometimes can't afford as large of houses with inflation. Well, with townhomes, they're actually estimated to bring in more students than single-family homes, so basing off square footage wouldn't be fair adjust. We're looking at where the students are. So, the work has been done. Pass the bill as-is, it's what's right for the county, it's what we've been asking for. No one can argue with inflation. I mean, things just cost more money. People expect. People expect to pay more money for things when they cost more money. It's where we're at, and it's way too late already. Pass it. Get a fix in. We'll work on the state legislation that keeps us at a cap, that keeps us in that hole. The hole that's been created over the last twenty years, it's going to take a really long time to climb out of. None of these changes are going to do that. We need to get it done. So thank you. Thank you for the committee for working on it. Mr. President, citizens like Branda that attended those meetings, a lot of hard work went into it. This bill is excellent. It covers so many aspects. It'll raise over time with inflation. It's built in for the state cap. It's an excellent bill, and it's really what's right. And please just show us who you stand with. Are you standing with the students? Are you standing with your current tax base? Or are you on the other side? And for those building homes and for development that want to lower the rate or not have it pass, is it because you disagree with the math and disagree with the argument, or just because you don't want to pay it? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name an address, please.
Good evening, Mr. President. Joseph Francis Snee, Jr., thirteen twenty-two Crafton Shop Road, Belair, two ten fourteen. I'm a contrarian, and I rise in opposition to Bill twenty-four oh three-three to raise the school impact fee, and you should not, and why not, for the following reasons. Since December five of twenty twenty-two, Harford County has been stagnant. The economy has suffered, and the stagnation is caused in large part by overregulation stunning the county's growth. This bill is something that just piles on. That's all that this does. And unlike sewers, unlike roads, unlike water systems, the amount of educational services that will be used by any single-family home, townhouse, apartment, or otherwise, is very difficult to determine when it comes to schools. Houses do not send children to schools. Families do. New homes can be purchased by Harford Countyans who do not add to the school population. For example, homeschoolers, empty nesters, families who move from one Harford County residence to another, private schoolers, childless households, and so on. Impact fees, in my experience of forty years of land use, are nothing more than politically expedient means to construct public schools. The general public funds should be doing that, not targeted home builders and home buyers, because one of two things is going to happen. The home builders will move out and say it's not worth it in Harford County. If they do elect to build, they'll pass it on to the home buyer, and the home buyer pays. Now, I've heard it's only four thousand at eleven a month. That's not what it is. It's a hundred thousand dollars in costs to put a shovel in the ground in Harford County for a single-family home before you can put a stick in the ground. It's the cumulative effect of these fees that are killing the golden goose, and that's home building, the most important industry in Harford County. And raising impact fees adds nothing more than unaffordability. Forty-seven years ago, we had thirty-four thousand kids in this system. That's when I graduated. Fast forward today, thirty-eight thousand. This doesn't pass the nexus test of Dolan and Nolan. All school systems are under capacity, middle, high, and elementary. Oh, three-three is nothing more than a smokescreen. It doesn't address the real capital needs.
Mr. Snee, bring your comments.
It makes growth less likely. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
With no other speakers, this will conclude this public hearing, and it will be taken up at a future meeting. And Ms. Allegia, I want to go ahead and take about a five or ten-minute recess. Chair calls the order Legislative Session Day twenty-four dash zero twenty-eight. I would ask you to please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilmember Bennett.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, I ask that you are with us tonight as we continue to do this work not just on the dais but back in our communities, represent our neighbors and their needs. Tonight, I pray in my district, in my town, for my community, as we lost the life of a young man, Jaden, at fourteen years old. I pray that you are with him, his classmates, his family, his teachers, his coaches, and all who knew him as they just travel through this difficult time, and that you're with us all as leaders in this community to have the right words and the right actions to support one another. You're in me pray. Amen.
Amen. Agenda item number four, Presentation of Proclamations. We have none. Five, Consideration of Petitions, Applications, Appointments, and Nominations. Council Appointed Twenty Twenty-Five Mako Legislative Committee, Council Representative and Alternate, may I have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve the appointments of Councilman Pennman and Councilman Riley as an alternate.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's been moved in second to approve both Mr. Pennman and Mr. Riley for our Mako Representatives. Is there any discussion? I would like to just comment on the fact that Mr. Pennman and Mr. Riley attend meetings regularly, and they come back and inform us of everything that's going on that impacts us here in Harford County, and I appreciate both of their service. With that, Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Executive appointments, James V. Captain Jim McMahon, Commission on Veterans Affairs, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the appointment of Dr. Andre Mountain.
May I have a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's been moved and seconded to approve Dr. Mountain as a new appointment for the Veterans Administration. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Dr. Mountain, are you in the audience?
I am.
Thank you for your service, ma'am. Department of Social Services Advisory Board may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the reappointments of Dr. Andre, Andrea Mountain and Dr. Mark Lavelle.
And?
And the new appointments of Courtney Cluster, Daniel Russon, Christine Gerhart, and Cynthia Phillips.
May I have a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved in second to approve the reappointments and new appointments. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, the appointments are hereby approved, and we may have all of you that are here with us this evening stand, please. Thank you. Towing Appeals Board may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the appointments of Jeffrey Clark.
May I have a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved in second to uphold the hearing examiner's decision. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Pennman.
On this evening, when this public hearing took place, I was not here, but I've watched, done, read the report, so I'm well aware of the details in this particular case.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, the recommended decision of the hearing examiner dated June fourth, twenty twenty-four is hereby approved. Six, Special Presentations, we have none. Seven, Approval of Minutes, Public Hearing October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Legislative Day twenty-four dash zero twenty-seven, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Eight, Introduction and Consideration of Resolutions, we have none. Nine, Introduction of Bills, we have none. Ten, Introduction and Consideration of Amendments, we have none. Eleven, Call for Final Reading of Bills, Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-one, Hotel Occupancy Tax, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-one.
May I have a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's been moved and seconded to approve Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-one. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
No.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one negative, Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-one is hereby approved. Twelve, Enrollment of Bills, Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-one, Hotel Occupancy Pass, is the certified text finally passed? Thirteen, Unfinished Business, none. Fourteen, Unfinished Business, none. Seventeen, Comments and Input from Attending Citizens. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There are no speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Sixteen, Business from Councilmembers. I've lost my place. I'm going to start with Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, as a point of special privilege, I want to thank all the people who have communicated with myself and my wife over the passing of her mom last Monday. She'll be viewed at Sheminix Funeral Home in Belair this Saturday from two to three to five, seven to nine. Been a difficult time for my wife that there's no one, you never would see a daughter and a mother that were more closer than the two of them. About ten or so years ago, my mom was living by herself, and her husband had died. We're a World War II veteran, by the way, with a couple of Purple Hearts, the Bronze Star, and all kind of other medals from World War II, and he had passed away nine or ten years before that, and she was not looking good or losing a lot of weight, so we said, well, it's enough of that, Mom. You're going to move in with us. So ten or twelve years ago, we moved her in with us, and then she got a lot better. My wife force-fed her, and she put on about twenty-six, twenty-seven pounds, and she did real well for the next ten years. So she made it to ninety-eight. We were trying to get her to a hundred so we could bring her here and present her with a proclamation of her making a hundred, but unfortunately, she didn't make it. So she was a great lady. My mom actually died forty-seven years ago, so I adopted her, and her and I watched TV a lot, sitting alongside of each other, watching baseball games and football games and arguing over the results and all that kind of stuff. We took her everywhere because we couldn't leave her behind, but we took her out to dinner a lot, and one of her favorite restaurants, her favorite, not one, but her favorite restaurant was the diner on Ebenezer Road. She loved that diner. I don't care, we could take her to the Waldorf Astoria, and the first thing she would say, well, this ain't as good as the diner, you know? And when she came in there, they just took care of her. And about a month ago, she had to go to hospital. She went in the hospital for about six days, and then they sent her home, they said, because they couldn't do anymore, but she was just strong enough for us to take her down to the diner for one more time. And she had her dinner there and came back, and that was about the last time she went out, and she was going to go in hospice. We said, no, that ain't going to happen. You're going to do hospice, you're going to do it from the house. So we had, they came and did hospice from the house. I didn't realize what I was asking for, but the front door turned into a revolving door, and they really treated her great. I mean, nurses and doctors and all came, I mean, just ten, twelve hours a day, and then even brought a hospital bed in for her last week or so, and it did great. So I just can't thank you enough, everybody, for all the emails and phone calls and everything, and my wife does too, and she's having a little difficult time right now with it. Just a couple other things. On Saturday, nineteenth, I attended the music festival that they had at Flying Point Park, put on with Van Van Miller. She's done a great job with the Seven Fifty-Five Alliance. We appreciate what she does in Edgewood. Also, last night, we had our Edgewood Joppetown Advisory Board meeting at the Southern Precinct where we have it on. We do real well. It's probably one of the most well-attended community meetings in the county. It's always packed, and we always fill it up, fifty, sixty people, so we're very happy with the turnout, and we get a lot done because it's actually Edgewood Joppetown together. On Saturday, ninth, I'm not going to be able to make it because of the funeral arrangements or the viewing of my mother-in-law, but the grand opening of the First Harford Square Association Clubhouse at fourteen ninety-three Harford Square is going to open, and I just want to mention that because Carmen Jones, who is heading that HOA now, that Harford Square and that HOA has been dead for years, and she's revived it, and she's doing great jobs in that area, so we're very happy with the job she's doing, working together with the Edgewood community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Pennman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to offer my condolences to the Guthrie family. I've seen Diana and Deion's mother-in-law, and she was a strong woman. She went to events together as a family, so I'm sorry for your loss. I'm praying for your family. In honor of the election day today, in your time, respect for your time, I'll refrain from any further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Jan Giordano.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Deion, I met your mother-in-law a couple times. I am very sorry for your loss. It's been a tough month, I guess, for both of us, so my deepest condolences to Diana and yourself. Just a real busy week. Wednesday was our Business Appreciation Week. Congratulations to Kraus Companies, twenty-five years. Yorktown Sports, twenty-five years. Love Fleming Bursen, Halloran, twenty-five years. Henning and Henninger LLC, twenty-five years. I did Walktober at the Festival of Belair on October twenty-third also, and then on the twenty-fourth, myself, Councilman Pennman, I think, and Council President Vincenti were at the Town of Belair Annual Awards. Congratulations to Mike Blum as Citizen of the Year. Mike does the Belair Parade, the Christmas Parade and the Fourth of July Parade. They're tremendous parades, lots of people, great event. The Christmas Parade is probably my favorite parade of all of them, so I'm looking forward to that in December. Business of the Year was Newberry Cafe and Bakery. I think Pat knows that space pretty well. And then the Archer-Bull Award goes to Harford Retirement Planners right down the street from my office. They did a phenomenal job, and I wish them all the best. On Friday, did the CP Tour with MDOT here, asked them about some questions about nine twenty-four and the expansion of the road and about repaving right down here in front of Bond on Route One. That's going to get done next year. And then did a Business of the Year was Newberry Cafe and Bakery. I think Pat knows that space pretty well. And then the Archer-Bull Award goes to Hartford Retirement Planners right down the street from my office. They did a phenomenal job, and I wish them all the best. The, on Friday, did the CP Tour with MDOT here, asked them about some questions about 924 and the expansion of the road and about repaving right down here in front of Bond on Route 1. That's going to get done next year. And then did a Hartford County Commission on Disabilities Annual Employment Recognition Lunch. And the, on Friday, I'm surprised Councilman Pennman didn't mention, but Hartford County Sheriff's Office 250th Anniversary Dinner at Maryland Country Club to celebrate their 250 years, had a couple of old sheriffs show up. I guess once a sheriff, always a sheriff, and the one guy did pull out a letter that it was signed by a sheriff, to a sheriff, by a former sheriff, or something like that. So pretty interesting. And Council President, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano and Mr. Riley.
Yes, Councilman Pennman didn't mention that, Tony, because we were trying to do brevity tonight, so I'm going to do what Councilman Pennman did, and I have no comment.
Good Lord. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Thank you, Council President. I'll reserve my comments as well. Have a good evening.
Goodness gracious, I love it. Thank you. Mr. Bennett.
Hello, good evening. It's been another very busy week in my office. We did a lot of work. One thing I'll highlight very quickly is that we organized a meeting between the Sheriff's Office and the Hartford Center that we had this morning to help build partnership there, to help support the participants in the Hartford Center and make a community connection. So that was great this morning, very productive. I just wanted to highlight that on November 18th, there will be a community input meeting with planning and zoning for rezoning applications that we've received as a county. This community input meeting is a great opportunity for you to voice your thoughts on the rezoning applications that came forward through this process. And it's important that we heard. I know Mr. Tibbs was there, and he spoke. You didn't quite finish your comments, so come to the next one. And it was, Council President and I were at the one last night, and it was well-attended with lots of really good feedback. And then lastly, I just want to, as I recognized in my prayer this morning, or at the start of this meeting, it felt like it was morning, it was that long ago. The loss of Jaden Winchester, a 14-year-old at Havity Grace High School, who tragically lost his life to gun violence this past weekend while at a Halloween party with friends. Jaden was a larger-than-life personality, a big part of the Havity Grace community, and a former student of mine, who I taught nine years ago when he was six-years-old. It's a big loss. You know, we have to do something about the violence that exists in our community, that exists amongst youth, to better take care of our kids. I'm very thankful that the majority of the rest of our council is going to support a resolution I'm putting forward next week, talking just about that. So with that, that's everything tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Business from the President, I'm just going to touch on a couple of things. Ribbon cutting for Wagner and Associates, it's a new building renovated down at the festival area for an accounting firm, outstanding firm. Also, we did a proclamation presentation for Hartford County employee retiree, and that's Clarence Ross, and we want to thank him for his 50 years of service to Hartford County. Also, as Mr. Jan Giordano mentioned, the 250th Anniversary Dinner, there were several of us there. It was an outstanding evening. I had an opportunity to go to Ladue's Garden Glow, had never been before. It was amazing. I highly recommend it for anybody to go if they have an opportunity. The Hartford County Public Library Gala, the Upper Chesapeake's, University of Maryland Upper Chesapeake Health Foundation's Star Night Gala this past weekend was amazing. I had not been to that before. I think 750 of your closest friends were there. It was an outstanding evening. And then, as mentioned earlier, we had our first official APFO work group meeting with the consultants. They were in-house. I want to thank Tyson and Kelly to come up, or for coming up from Wharton Smith. We had 18 members in the room, outstanding presentation, roundtable discussion, and I want to thank Mr. Pennman, and typically, Mr. Guthrie would be with us, he was not available that day. But our next meeting will be advertised, it'll be open to the public, and that should come out in the next few weeks. Then I had an opportunity to meet here in the chambers with some college students and professors from Hungary. They were here for about an hour and a half. I was nervous as a kitten, man. They were asking all kinds of questions, but we were able to get them done. I want to thank Congressman Andy Harris and Ms. Kiple for setting it up and bringing them in. And then also, I want to thank my colleagues, Mr. Jan Giordano and Mr. Pennman, for joining me for the priorities presentation to the Hartford County delegation in this chambers last week as well, so. And then finally, Deion, Jeannie, I want to express our deepest condolences to you and Diane and your family and friends.
And thank you for that flower. It was very nice.
Oh, you're welcome. I picked that out myself, you know?
That's a surprise.
Yeah, it was. I even had to trim it and put it in water for you.
So I got it out of the front lawn.
I did. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.